Hi, I'm Sean Anderson and welcome to the Ponca City Public Schools Board Wrap-Up Show. It's our monthly visit with the Superintendent of Ponca City Public Schools. And this, of course, will be our last Board Wrap-Up Show with Superintendent Dr. Pennington. And so we'll talk more about that and the big changes that are happening very quickly right here with Ponca City Public Schools coming up. But first, before we talk about any of that, Dr. Pennington, these Board meetings in the summer, are they less involved typically than through the school year? That's my perception.
Yeah, you know, in some ways they are. There's a lot of just kind of routine work that goes on in the summer. If you looked at the agenda for Monday's meeting, you would have looked at it and said, "Well, there's lots of stuff on this agenda." And there was lots of stuff on the agenda, but it was all routine kind of matters. We renewed contracts with software companies and various vendors that we've done business with for years and will continue to do business with and have long-term relationships with that are kind of the nuts and bolts of allowing the school district to operate. They're, you know, when we think about schools, we always think about teachers and we think about principals and we think about custodians. But like any other business, we have lots of software that allows us to function and operate. We have lots of suppliers that we work with. And so we approve those contracts Monday and...
And that's something you have to do yearly and there's for a reason. I mean, some might ask, "Well, why can't you just say, 'Okay, for the next five years,'" but you're not allowed to.
Right. Oklahoma law only allows us to enter into contracts with really any company, organization, any individual for only one year. In fact, the only multi-year contract that the school district is allowed to enter into is with their superintendent. And that's actually, that's state constitutional law. And it goes back, if you, you know, we've talked before about taxing policy and how conservative Oklahoma is. And because you only have one-year contracts, then you're not obligating the district financially for more than one year at a time. And that's part of that conservative philosophy and budgeting in the state of Oklahoma.
Well, speaking of budgeting, we'll talk about that coming up because a budget was approved for the upcoming school year. And we'll talk about an interesting point to that with Dr. Pennington here in just a moment. But right now, really, the biggest news coming out of the Ponca City Public Schools Board Meeting the other evening was the Superintendent position, of course, Dr. Pennington. I mentioned at the top of this show that this will be our last Board Wrap-Up Show. And you, did you expect them to name a new?
I was very surprised.
Were you?
I mean, I wasn't surprised with the choice. I was just surprised that it happened the way it happened. You know, when we sat here last month, one of the things we talked about was that in the main Board Meeting, we honor our retirees. And I think I may have mentioned that I'm always envious of those people because they have these big smiles on their faces. I had no idea that almost exactly two weeks after that, that an opportunity would be presented to me that would allow me to retire and to pursue a different, to be involved in public education, to do the things I'm passionate about, which is advocating for our schools and for our children, but to just do it in a different way.
Well, and that's a, and that's a point that I wanted to make. And it's really exciting, I'm sure it's much more exciting for you, but exciting for me to hear you announce and make that transition because we've often talked about on this very show how frustrating it is. And now you're going to be in a position that will put you, especially during the legislative session, you're going to be in the thick of it. And do you feel like you'll have just a better chance to make an impact?
Well, you know, I hope so. Obviously, I'll be closer to the action, I guess. I mean, I've always been fortunate enough, the Board's always allowed me to be involved. But, you know, in the position I'm in now, a lot of that is spent reacting to what's going on at the legislature. And sometimes that reaction is two hours, three hours, four hours after a discussion's been held. Now I'll be able to be a, to be a part of those discussions. I'll be able to sit in the meetings with the groups that advocate for education policy and to at least express my view on the positions that we take. And I think to really be, you know, Ponca City is unique. We are a large school district in the state of Oklahoma, but we are also a rural school. And so I'll be able to advocate for that in this new job. I'm going to be representing the 50 largest school districts in the state of Oklahoma, which Ponca City is a part of that group. And so it's a chance to, because the needs of a large district, even a large rural district, are different than the needs of a traditional rural district or a small district. So I'll be able to advocate on that behalf. But at the end of the day, it's all about students. And 99% of what happens in the legislature and education policy, what's good for Jinx or Broken Arrow or Edmond or Oklahoma City, Tulsa, is good for Ponca City, New Kirk, Tonkawa, and Godibo. Now, there are some things, there's some things a little bit different. And obviously, that's the nuances of this new position. But right now, in our state, I think we, I don't think any, I mean, there may be a few out there, but I think that we all recognize that we've got to find a way to get revenue to schools so that they can get back to educating students in classrooms that are smaller and to increase the amount of teachers that are available in the state to hire. And it's not going to happen without new dollars and a real commitment. And so I'll have a chance to be a part of that discussion and hopefully will be effective. I, you know, I don't think there's any way to know how effective anybody's going to be. There are lots of forces in play and, but...
Well, you're an educator and when you get down there and speaking generally, and maybe this isn't fair to all state representatives, certainly wouldn't apply to all of them, but do you think there are a lot of people down at the Capitol that need educated?
Oh, I think there's no doubt that there's always a need for education and especially to help explain to our legislators really what the impact of the decisions that they make and to make the case. At the end of the day, I mean, you know, you hear this a lot, "Well, we have a limited amount of money." That's absolutely true. But the question is, is the need for education great enough that we need to increase the amount of money that the state government has to spend? I mean, that's really where we are. And my answer to that is absolutely yes. And so my role is going to be to help explain to them the dramatic effects that we're seeing in teacher recruitment, teacher retention, and in the, and in the education that our students are receiving, not because our teachers are not working hard, not because they don't have supplies and materials they need, but because they've got too many kids in their classrooms. And because when we, when we, when we lose a quality educator, we're not... When I started in this, and you've heard me say this before, when I started this job, when we had a, when we had a teaching position open, it was, it was only a matter of interviewing and selecting the best candidate because you had lots of good candidates. Today, it more and more is, first of all, the fight is to get applications. Can I get somebody to even apply for the job I have? And then, in way too many cases, it's, it's not that you've got three really good candidates and you just select the best one. In too many cases today, you only have one good candidate and you've got to convince them why they should come to work for you and not go to work for some other school district. I mean, we are, we are really fighting each other for talent.
It's as if the interview process is reversed. The candidate is interviewing the school system.
You know, I remember when I started teaching in the 70s. I mean, you just felt lucky to get an interview. And you took whatever job was open to you. And I'm telling you that today, candidates have choices. And the other thing that's, that's really been interesting, you used to kind of have an unwritten rule among school districts, especially with new teachers. And that rule was if, if I offered you a job and you said yes, then other districts, even if you had applied already, first of all, they wouldn't interview you. And second, if they found out that you had a contract with another district, they, okay?
They'd back off.
They'd back off. Uh-uh. Not today.
Too competitive.
Too competitive. So if you've got a contract and you've already signed it with Ponca City Schools, that doesn't prevent you from interviewing someplace else and that other district offering you a job and then, and then kind of making us the bad guy. Because the new teacher says, "Well, you know, I, I've accepted a job closer to home or my hometown and I want to work there rather than work for you and you need to release me from my contract." And we're saying, "Uh-uh. You sign with us until we find a replacement. We're not letting you go." And, and I'm sorry that...
But that happens.
It's happening a lot right now. And, and of course, so now you've got a teacher who's not happy because they want to be somewhere else and you're making them stay with you. And you got to, now, so now what effect is that going to have on your classroom? And again, we're all doing that because we can't find people. We just can't find them. And I never, in my wildest dreams, I never, I never anticipated that I would not be able, the day before school started, go out and have a good list of candidates, especially elementary teachers, that I could hire the day before school started and we get to work. And that's just not the way it is right now. And it, and it really is creating an issue for all of us. I mean, we, it is not, I don't think it will happen to us this year, but if there's not a change quickly, I anticipate in the next year or so, next, next, for next, in the next five years, we will actually have a situation where we cannot find a teacher for an elementary classroom. And I never thought those words would ever come out of my mouth.
Right. Well, certainly, so many challenges built in to the job of Superintendent. And at the last School Board Meeting, the School Board retired into a special session. And that session was what many thought would be an opportunity for them to go over applicants and start what could have been a long exhaustive search for a new Superintendent. It wasn't overwhelmingly qualified candidate was one of the candidates and they said, "This makes perfect sense." And Shelley Eret, it's no secret and we don't have to make it a big reveal. Most know that announcement has been made. Shelley Eret, talk to us about her because this is someone who has experience on all levels. From the classroom teacher to principal and then working her way up through the system. She's very qualified and tell us about her.
Well, please. It was, it was kind of a surprise. I mean, you, when the, once the Board decided to take applications, my expectation was that they would interview three or four people. Usually, you know, you, you have your meeting, you decide you're going to interview. It takes two, two to three weeks to arrange those interviews and you interview your candidates and it takes another, you know, so usually it's somewhere from a two-week to a month process of filtering through all that. Which is when I made that decision to retire, which is why my effective retirement date is, is the end of August versus September because I thought there were a possibility that it may take them that long to find somebody. And if they would have brought somebody in from outside the district, that person would have had to stay on the job till they found their new person. But, you know, I, I mean, the Board hasn't revealed to me why they'd made the decision they made, but I think it's pretty clear they went in and looked at their applications and made the decision that, based upon the applications they had and the fact that they had such a strong inside candidate, that there wasn't any reason for them to go through an interview process when I think they probably already knew in their hearts what decision they were going to make. And, you know, I applaud them for that. I've been, during my career, I've been applicant, have applied for other positions. And, you know, one of the first things you always ask when a search firm calls you about a job is, "Is there an inside candidate?" Lots of Boards will go through this process and they'll go ahead and interview, which creates lots of stress for lots of people. Then they go, then they turn around and hire the inside candidate they had. And that's, you know, that's always frustrating to be a candidate, especially outside, because what happens is even though everybody's intention is to keep that, that process confidential, as a Board, once you start checking applications and you start calling and checking references, then somebody in that community where the, where, especially if somebody is a setting Superintendent, somebody in that community finds out about that, they know that, and now here goes the rumor mill. And the rumor mill's pretty strong. So obviously, a community, if the Superintendent's popular or well-liked or doing a good job, they don't want to see that candidate leave. And sometimes communities get offended because a Superintendent is looking for another job. And so that can undermine, so there's lots of negatives that happen. And you have to weigh all that when you apply for another position. So I'm very pleased that the Board didn't put anybody through that. And the other thing that pleases me about this is I believe that Shelley Eret was as, would be a strong candidate to be a Superintendent in any school district in the state of Oklahoma. So that's the first point I want to make. So Shelley is ready to be a Superintendent. She would be a strong candidate in any other district in the state. But she is especially strong in this district because she knows us so well. I mean, Shelley's been an employee for 20 years. She started off as a classroom teacher. She worked as an instructional coach. She served as a building level principal. She worked in, as a school turnaround specialist for us during the heyday of No Shot Left Behind. And then she's been Personnel Director for the last five years for the school district. So, you know, she's been a building level administrator. She's been a classroom teacher. She has experience in curriculum at the district level and she has experience in human relations and personnel. She's been involved in every major decision that we've made. The one thing that, that I think that we do that's, that we do well here is that, is that while we may have, especially at Central Office, individuals may have specific titles, we allow everybody to participate in those organizations. So Shelley has set in on construction meetings and she knows the budget for our construction projects and she knows kind of the overall goal of those projects. Now, she's not been involved in a day-to-day business like Brett Smith is, but she understands that. She attends Finance Committee meetings because finance is very much tied to personnel. So she knows what our budget is. She knows what our, what our challenges are financially. She has a great understanding of that. She's involved in curriculum meetings because again, in personnel, you hire teachers. So she's been very involved in the curriculum part of this, of what we do. And so she really has had exposure to every part of the school system. Now, obviously, anybody that's in charge of a division, primary focus is on that division. So she has to broaden her horizons some. She has to take a more, you know, the test, has to take a broader view of everything and maybe look even more closely about how all that fits together to work for the common good of kids. But, but she's, again, very well qualified and, and I'm extremely happy that they decided to do this. Obviously, I know this district very well and I know this community and they would have embraced whoever the district chose. They would have welcomed any new Superintendent with open arms. And I, and I will tell you that I don't know exactly who applied, but I did have some individuals contact me who are current Superintendents in the state of Oklahoma, who I respect very much and who I know would have done a great job for this school system if the Board would have decided to go that direction. And so for me, that just tells me how much confidence they have in, in Ms. Eret moving forward. And I, and I hope it, it brings a, there's always, anytime you have a change in the top job, there's always concern about, "How's this going to affect the district? How's it going to affect the direction we're going?" My personal, my opinion is, is that, is that we're not a district that needs great change. We, we have good programs in place. We're doing very good things for students. I mean, we can't do other things. But I think that we're more in a mode of continue and continue to modify and adapt what we do as we move forward as opposed to coming in and just starting over from scratch. And I, and I think that's, I mean, I don't, again, I don't know. My assumption would be that one of the reasons that the Board decided to stay with Shelley is that's the way they feel, that we're headed in the right direction. It doesn't mean we can't be better because we can be better. It doesn't mean we don't need to make changes because you always need to make changes. But we're not in something that we need to come in and, and just start over again or blow the ship up or have real, you know, major initiatives, major changes. Those things may come, but I think there'll always be kind of a modification of where we are right now rather than a changing course.
Sure. And with all of her qualifications and of course, the smoothest transition possible was probably a big factor. I mean, that's going to be a pretty smooth transition.
Well, it is and it's going to happen pretty quick in that. She's, obviously, there's some, you know, the Board has to eventually approve a contract, but I think the Board's intention is that, is that she will assume duties as Superintendent of July 1st. And so for the next, you know, 60 days or so, I guess I'll be like the chief advisor to the Superintendent or something like that. They'll find a little cubby hole for me to sit in. And I'll be available to...
I was going to ask you if she started moving some of her stuff in your office.
She had started moving in there, yeah. But I'm sure that'll happen pretty quick. And here's the other thing that, that is a part of this. You know, right now, this is the busiest time for your Director of Personnel. I mean, right now, Shelley's focus, as it should be, is on getting staff hired for us for next year. So she had, not only she had to hire teachers. We had a principal resign Monday night. She has to hire her replacement. So she's got a lot on her table from a personnel standpoint. So we haven't sat down and talked about what exactly do you want me to do starting July 1st. But I think that the conversations we've had is that, is that she wants to get the staff hired, get at least a new Director of Personnel in place and then kind of step in and start taking over more of the day-to-day responsibilities of the district. You know, the good thing is July is really a slow month from a overall district perspective. So it's not like that there's going to be a whole lot of decisions from a district-wide perspective that she needs to make or that I need to make or whoever, you know, whatever, whatever, again, whatever that role is. And really, until we get to the very beginning of the school year and actually when school starts is... So it's going to be a great transition. And again, I think the district is going to be in great hands, which is important to me. I mean, it really is. You know, you never, you never, you never truly leave one of these jobs. I mean, you may not be in charge anymore, but you will, you always keep up with what goes on. I mean, I still keep up with what goes on in Blackwell 13 years later. I still keep up in Bristow, which was the district I was at before Blackwell. Those are always a part of you. And because you invested 13 years of your life and obsessed over this every day. I mean, Bill White still calls me once, twice a year, you know, talking about Ponca City and what we're doing because he's still interested in what happens in this district. You have a sense of ownership.
Sure. Absolutely. Well, one other thing that happened at the Board Meeting the other evening was something that had to be done. And school districts throughout the entire state experienced the strange task putting together and approving a budget for an upcoming school year without knowing the exact numbers of funds available through state allocations. And that's got to be challenging, but there is a July 1st deadline to have those budgets approved for the upcoming school year.
So we did that.
But you don't know, you don't know what the state's going to allocate. So how do, you do that?
Well, what you do is you look at your, the amount of dollars that you had the year before. And so you start with that as your baseline budget. You look at your enrollment numbers and your enrollment numbers always tell you a picture. They tell you that your funding will be stable. Your funding may go up or it may be going down. And you're always, you're more worried about if you have a decrease in enrollment that your funding is down because obviously if you lose students, you lose money. You lose money. You need to adjust for that. So we were able to look at all those things. And so we, we based a budget on the information, best information we have right now, which is that legislature is telling us that our funding for next school year is going to be held, basically be stable for what it was supposed to be the year before. So we anticipate that our initial appropriation is going to be very similar to the initial appropriation we had in, I think we got it like July 15th last year. Now, with a couple of things. Number one, we do have, we, we know that our May of 2016 numbers were lower than our May of 25 number, or May of 15 number. So we know we're going to be funded on a lower number of students. So we know there's going to be a little, but it's not much. It's going to be probably 25 kids. So that's not a huge amount of money. What is concerning is that our May 17 numbers are lower than our May of 16 numbers. So we've kind of got a year to deal with that and to make some decisions about how we're going to, how we're going to play with those numbers. None of that, and that's always a concern. What makes it a real concern is we had to dip into our fund balance about $600,000 to get us through this year because the legislature cut our funding. So we look, we weighed all those things and put a budget together. We'll get our stated allocation sometime in July. I hope that, that the money that's in the budget is real. I don't know, you know, it's just unfathomable to me that we would have cuts, we'd have revenue failures in the state three years in a row. So if we can stabilize the budget, then we'll be fine next year. Now, obviously, we're very concerned because we already know that lawsuits been filed against the tax package or fee package, whatever you want to call it, the legislature passed into the session. Cigarette company, a couple of cigarette companies have filed a lawsuit and there's $225 million in next year's budget. And if that is overturned, then I don't, you know, that, that creates a problem. It's not unfixable, but you just, you kind of wonder if you get into a, you know, I mean, there's just, it's very uncertain right now. And, you know, I appreciate the legislature. I mean, I would appreciate it a lot more if they would have really gotten down and said, "Look, you know what, we, there's some things we're going to have to do that are unpopular, but we've got to do them because the state needs us to step up and do it." The things they've done are not bad things. I mean, I don't, do I think cigarette taxes should be higher? Yeah. I mean, a lot of the health care that we have in this state that is paid for by our state Medicaid program is because of tobacco use. So I don't see any problem with having people who smoke pay for that. But we should have, again, my opinion, we should have raised the gasoline tax. Gasoline tax in Oklahoma has not changed since the 1980s. And again, you know, people don't like paying gasoline taxes, but that's how we fund road construction in this state. So, you know, the, one of the reasons we're in the financial problem we are in for schools is because seven years ago, rather than continuing to finance road and bridge construction through gasoline taxes, we decided to pay for it out of the General Fund of the State of Oklahoma, which made less revenue available for schools and everything else that we do. But we ought to get back to paying that out of transportation taxes. So, and the whole fight about 2% on natural gas and oil wells and whether it ought to be 2% or 4% or 5% or 7%. I had a conversation the other day with a, with an, with an individual who is employed by an oil company in the state. And we got, we got to this issue of oil and gas taxes in Oklahoma. And his, and his statement was, you know, just basically, "Why would anybody believe that the amount of gross production taxes you levy have any effect on whether or not anybody drills for oil and gas?" Because they drill for it all across the country and really all across the world with varying... And really, all across the world, with varying, with many different ways that states and national governments collect revenue off of those taxes, off of those productions. And I think, you know, I, I don't know. There may be, I don't know how you can be lower than two percent, there may be somebody that is. But the other thing that people need to remember that is dramatically different in Oklahoma, we don't charge property taxes on those, on those, when they're drilling for oil, when that stuff's coming, we don't charge any property taxes, and other states do. So, so we, you know...
So there are places.
There are places.
There are places where more money could...
Where more money could be, could come. And it's just a matter of having the political will to do that. And I'm disappointed that, that that didn't happen. Now, again, are there, I, I get it, if I were in the legislature, and, you know, nobody wants to run for reelection and have their opponent be able to say, he voted to raise taxes.
Right.
But eventually, the people of the state of Oklahoma have got to pay better attention.
Right.
And, and, and to do a better job of thinking when they go to the ballot box about, you know, yes, my representative voted to raise taxes, but he did that for a good purpose.
Right.
He did it for the right reasons.
Wouldn't it be refreshing to see a candidate say, yeah, my, my opponent says I, I raised taxes? I sure did, and this is why, because bottom line is, it's going to help our children and our education.
And to have the public embrace that.
Right.
And support that. That's traditionally not what happens.
Right.
So, you know, again, as citizens, we have to, we have to, we have to understand that. And another thing, because this always surprises me. You know, I was, we all watched the news, right? And they, when they were talking about tax increases, I saw somebody from a very small town, a business owner, you know, basically saying, well, I don't want to see taxes go up because it hurts our customer base. It happens to be a school district that I know pretty well. And in the last, last five years, they've, they've, they've reduced their teaching staff by thirteen people. Now, you know, my guess is that, that what, when you, you, when you say that, it may hurt my business. I promise, losing those thirteen teachers in that community hurt that business a whole lot more than that tax increase hurt them.
Right.
Just like in our community, you know? If, if we got back to the funding level we were at back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we'd probably have forty to fifty more employees here. You know, you think about that. If I, if we had fifty more teachers at forty thousand dollars, that's two million dollars into the Ponca City economy.
Sure.
And we don't think about teachers the same way we talk, we, we, we... If, if a local manufacturer here in town were to increase their work, had an opportunity to increase their, their employment base by ten, twelve people, we'd be excited to be on the front page of the paper. Well, we need to understand that, that, that teachers are an employee. They're a part of economic development. And every teaching job we have in this community is a job to be cherished, because it, it, I mean, it, it's more people to listen to the radio station, it's more people to buy gas, it's more people to go to the store, more people to buy houses. I mean, it has a dramatic effect on this community, and, and, and we just need to recognize that. And we don't recognize that for whatever reason.
Well, you'll have an opportunity, of course.
I'll get to talk about that from now on.
Yeah, you will, absolutely. Dr. Pennington, thank you so much.
It's been a pleasure, Sean.
Pleasure. And this is, of course, has been a wonderful board wrap-up. I've enjoyed it very much, visiting with Dr. Pennington. And our last board wrap-up show was Superintendent Pennington. And the next board wrap-up show you'll see next month will be with the new superintendent of Ponca City Public Schools, Shelley Errett. Again, Dr. Pennington, thank you, and always incredible. And thank you for explaining things, because a lot of these issues are complex.
And I just want to say, you know, one final time, how much I appreciate the Ponca City community. You know, you look at the last couple of bond issues that we've had, and the overwhelming support we've had, and, and the willingness of this community to invest in their children is, there's no other, no other place in the state of Oklahoma that, that, especially when you think about what's, we've been through here with what happened at the, at Conical Phillips, and, you know, when Tyson shut down, we've had all these things that, that could have caused deep fissures and deep divisions, and called people, and caused people to kind of abandon their schools and not want to invest. And I appreciate, we, we really do have a unique community, and, and I really appreciate being allowed to serve in this position for the last thirteen years.
Absolutely. Dr. Pennington, well said. Thank you so much. Until next time, this is the Board Wrap-Up Show for Ponca City Public Schools. I'm your host, Sean Anderson, and thank you for watching.